Let's get started, roll call.
Larry Burns. Michelle Precher. Here. Kenneth Farrell.
Yes.
Lawrence T. Stevens.
Here.
John Preston.
Here.
Jamie Eastsider. You.
All right, I'll hand it over to Jamie for nominations for Chair and Vice Chair.
Do we have a nomination for Planning Commission Chair?
Nominate Ken Farrell.
Okay.
Second, Chair, please.
Great, hearing Ken Farrell, are there any other nominations? If none, I will close the nominations. All those in favor of Kenneth Farrell being the Planning Commission Chair say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the ayes have it, congratulations, Ken.
Thank you.
Moving on, nomination and election of Planning Commission Vice Chair, do we have a nomination for Planning Commission Vice Chair?
Larry Stevens.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations. All those in favor of Larry Stevens as Planning Commission Vice Chair say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, congratulations Larry, you're the Vice Chair.
All right. Thank you. Motion to approve the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting agenda.
So moved, second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. I have motion to approve the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, item number three, we have Diddens Greenhouse Plumbering Land Development Plan Presentation.
You, yeah.
Any intro or?
Yeah, you're up.
Grandma.
Good evening, my name is Kirk Klaus, Klaus and Klaus Consulting Engineers. We've been working on Diddens plans for a while. We made a lot of progress of recent in the last couple of months. Give you a little history, I was before Hatfield Township Planning Commission last week. And they, the Planning Commission recommended a preliminary approval of our plan to the Board of Commissioners of the township. And again, I want, I want to elaborate on that, that I have a recommendation of preliminary, not preliminary fine. The project still has a few potential hurdles to go through, so that if things go really well for me tonight, that would be my request possibly for this board to consider a recommendation of preliminary approval tonight as well. We have a second review letter from Carsich Associates dated February twenty-one. Actually, this is the same project that we saw before, it has not changed drastically. Obviously, there have been some fine tuning efforts with respect to the design. And as Chad mentioned, it's mostly in the township. It's filled over just a little bit into the borough and access comes through from Vine, Vine Street through the borough to get to the Hatfield Township portion of the site. First thing that Chad spoke about was some zoning issues. His comment number one in zoning has to do with parking. Truly just a clarification to comply with the parking requirements of the borough, and it is a matter of better clarification on the plan. If anybody is familiar with the site, especially as the, with respect to the existing driveway that comes off of Vine Street, there's a couple of existing greenhouses on that side of the street. As you well know, the main part of the business is, is on the, the other side of Vine Street. On, I'll call it on our side of Vine Street. There's a couple of small greenhouses and currently some parking. And that parking is being relocated a bit from an area that was
Yes.
That was along the railroad tracks in this area here. There'll still be some parking on the other side of the driveway. And as Chad has said, he's looking for clarification, which we'll provide.
What number is that?
Number one, first thing.
Zoning order is number one.
Yeah.
It's under zoning because that section of the ordinance talks about required parking. And we're talking about clarifying the parking. So i- it's a non-issue with respect to zoning. It's merely, merely a clarification of what we're doing with the existing condition and how we're dealing with parking. It has been noted, and I, I kind of totally zoned out, that some of the parking spaces are in fact in the Clear Site Triangle, which obviously is a problem, and that will be redesigned.
Kirk, can, can you clarify us real quick? So right now, it's all gravel out there?
Yes, it is.
And part of my, I guess, question was, are you removing some of the gravel and to, to better delineate the parking spaces? And replacing it with grass, or how will those parking spaces be delineated in this comparison to the rest of the gravel that's out there?
Currently, my client is, is of the opinion they'd like to leave the existing condition as it is. So those parking spaces would remain pretty much as they are now with paint on the gravel that has been dealt with and maintained over time, so that the, the paint stays when the gravel moves. That may take some discussion, but it is not their intention to pave that.
So right now, it's, it's a, just a mass of gravel, I'll say. And you'll paint those parking spaces, but in between the parking spaces, it'll still be gravel, right?
Yes.
And then in, in, between the parking spaces and the buildings, that'll also be gravel.
Correct, because access still needs to be gotten into these greenhouses. You can see by the hatching, this is paving, proposed paving. So there will be a paved section of this driveway, along with some curb work and the, the handicap ramps for the crossing. But this area here will in fact remain stone as currently proposed.
Now, this is still not open to the public, it's still just for the, the business and?
That is correct, not open to the public. And we can add some signage to that effect, make sure the public understands that they're not allowed to go back this driveway.
What about the wholesale people that, that you deal with, will they be using that, or is that just strictly employees?
Strictly employees.
And did I understand from your plans correctly that you will have essentially overflow parking on the other side of the street as well?
Yes. When we converted, and that's on the parking plan, we converted some open blacktop space. And we're, we're adding some lines and some parking spaces where there is currently existing blacktop on, off of Butler Avenue.
Really, the key is that there will be sufficient parking without people needing to park in the driveway itself.
Correct.
That will block traffic.
Absolutely correct. The second
So that is, the number one is no variance needed or anything?
No, it's just a clarification. Number two is a different story. This has to do with the floodplain analysis that was performed on the site. And, and I'd like to have you go to the bottom of sheet one at one line, saying there are no outstanding comments with respect to the floodplain analysis. And that was a goal of mine with this set of revised plans. I wanted to make sure that Chad and Brian McAdam, the Hatfield Township Engineer, were happy with our calculations and that we could all agree to where the lines are. The, the hydraulic calculations have been conducted, and everybody, and both the borough and the township are in agreement with my analysis. Now, to that point, back up to number two, we are placing some fill driveway and the rain garden, if I could see. This is, this is the proposed floodplain line. The existing floodplain line kind of came down and came into, into this, this area here. So this is an area where there's going to be a rain garden and, and there's some association to fill with the rain garden and, and the driveway. So we will have to go to the second hearing board for a variance for that. Likewise, number four, the borough has a repairing corridor conservation district that matches the floodplain, so that exact same relief will be needed from the repairing corridor conservation district with the addition of getting approval for the removal of some vegetation in that, in that fill area. This is a very minor encroachment in the fringe of the floodplain. And as the analysis yielded, there is no increase in the hundred year high water mark on, on this side of the floodplain. So the borough side, all of the residents, residences along West Vine Street will see no impact as a result of our, our relief that we're requesting for the, the fill that we're doing, mostly in the, in the, in the township.
And that's really the important part, you can see that existing floodplain goes up into those properties, those residential properties. And it encompasses, you know, pool areas. That's why it was important that this floodplain analysis needs to be informed and that it shows that the improvements aren't going to increase that, because any little bit of increase is going to push that further on those properties. And as Kirk said, I, I thought the, the analysis was well done, and I have no questions.
This is kind of a geeky statement that I'm going to best make do as an engineer. I love it when practicality can match up with the calculation. My client owns this property, it's great here. And during the worst storm that they've ever experienced in the twenty, thirty years that they've lived there, they said the floodplain went around the pool, but it never got to the garage. So when I heard that and saw this, yes. So that, that is our zoning relief, we will be making applications at the zoning hearing board to get that relief.
Did you get the same variances from the township?
We, the
Or similar?
Similar. The township does not have a repairing corridor conservation district. But that same fill that we're proposing here will also have to be sought from the township.
So you haven't gone to this, you, you were at the zoning hearing board for the township?
I, we were at the zoning hearing board with the township first. Because we went for a use variance, the zoning district on the township side is residential, farming residential. So we needed to go for variances for use or impervious cover limitations and building coverage. And we were granted those three variances to accommodate our plan in the township. So now we have to go back for this floodplain.
So you can see the dark, see the thicker dash line, that is the municipal boundary. Right? Yep, exactly, right there. And all the improvements for the building itself and the parking are in the township's portion. What's in the borough is the storm basin to the top left of the plan, it says MRC Dry, yep, that's the storm basin. And a little bit of the fill material along, I'll say, the upper side of that, that municipal boundary, up to the, to the right, to the right, right? Yep, along, along there. Those are the encroachments into the floodplain, they're very minor. And then the widening of the driveway itself is an encroachment. So even though it is very minor, they, they are encroaching, they had to run their floodplain analysis, and they do have to get the variances. I don't anticipate it being a problem for small improvements or small impacts floodplain elevation, or how far it goes into the properties. That's my opinion.
Okay, moving on to the next page, page three of the letter. Under subdivision land development, one and two are, are will comply. And I'll just skip over the ones, if, if you're okay with that. If anybody has a particular issue with anything that I'm skipping over, please stop me. I'm going to go down to number three on the stormwater comments. And this is not really a stormwater comment, but this is where Chad put it in the letter. This has to do with when we, when we get to the final plan, the developer's agreement, financial security. And I'd like to ask the borough, and start with you guys and lady. Would the borough consider, since, since this project is split between two municipalities, it's cumbersome to do one developer's agreement and one security. It's obviously twice as bad to have to do it twice. Would the borough consider yielding to Hatfield Township to take and do the developer's agreement and financial security for the entire project? And legally, I, 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 obviously, I'm an engineer, I'm not a lawyer. Is, is that possible? Can, can the township require improvements and an escrow on improvements that are on the property but not in their township?
I don't know.
Assume the answer is yes, and I don't know that for a fact.
I don't know if we can do that for the MPC, but
I've never seen it done.
Yeah.
If, if this were to be done, I would think there would have to be an intermunicipal agreement between the borough and the township.
Yeah.
And in my opinion, that'd probably get more complicated than just doing it to.
Yeah.
But you know, you could always ask Kate, but I, I really don't know. I'm sorry?
How am I going to split it?
The
Because the basin is kind of in both, rain garden clearly is in both.
I, I would say, in my opinion, that the stormwater improvements are most impactful to the borough.
Yeah, so we, we could hold the money for the stormwater improvements.
And the driveway.
And, and, and our portion of the driveway and the township could hold the balance.
Now, when you say stormwater, are you just talking about the basin construction? You're not talking about stormwater in the township that is draining to the basin?
I would say basin and rain garden.
Yeah.
That would be my opinion.
And I agree, you know, as far as the driveway is concerned, that, that's easily bystacked and, and split into two pieces. Okay, thought I'd ask, I try.
Sure, yeah, and the solicitors, and I didn't hear an opinion from the planning commission.
Well, I, I
Solicitor.
I, I don't think you can do that for the MPC, but, but again, if, if, if there's a way to do it and the, and the two solicitors can figure it out, I, I, as long as, as long as the borough's whole that security is there, ju- and again, not that you guys are going anywhere, but if we don't do it for you, we, we have to do it for everybody else. And, and, you know, your history here in the borough, are we going to have a problem? No. But, but the fact of the matter is, we have to do it per the MPC, and if the lawyers can come together and come to some form that they can do it like that, I don't think we have an issue with it. But if they can't do it, then, you know, again, like we said, if, if, if we're holding basin and, and the outlet and part of the drive, and they hold the storm sewer and the rest of the drive, and, and the balance, I think there, there's a simple agreement to go, and, and certainly if one agreement is prepared, certainly I think both solicitors can make comments on it and, and come maybe to one tri-party developer's agreement that all three people sign.
There you go.
It's just that security for us, security for them, is held in two different pots, because we're going to release ours separately from them releasing theirs. But you could do one agreement that, that a tri-party would sign, that the both solicitors have approved.
Right, one fund from the bank would be broken into the two pieces.
Yeah.
I like that, Ken. Yeah, thank you. The next page is, is a lot of details with respect to the, the calculations, the stormwater management calculations, landscaping, and some other trash racks, some other details that need to be noted, they would all be, I'm on page four, six through seventeen on all will comply. On page five, to number nineteen, at the top of the page, I'd like to have a discussion about this comment. Chad is asking would the township want, wish to have fencing around the tension base? I can tell you, the client wishes not to have.
Well, the, I think the problem is that kids do play back there. And, and, you know, God forbid, you know, similar to a swimming pool, that somebody is playing back there and, and, and falls in or something like that, or after we get a heavy rain in it, and it has, you know, has to take a few days to, to empty.
And it will, seventy-two hours.
Yeah. So you know, I, 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 I think it was some, some form of fencing should be installed there just because of that.
Do you think it's split rail with, with fencing in it or anything?
Yeah, I mean, doesn't have, split fair with some chicken wire in. You know, elevated maybe six inches of the trash and the, the debris can, can blow through. I, 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 you know, I'm, I'm a neighbor, so I, I see it firsthand, and I know a, a lot of kids do play back there, cut through there, cut from the apartments through and up as they're walking, so you know, just as a, as a protection, similar to a swimming pool, no different.
That's a general consensus from the planning commission?
Yeah. I agree.
Okay, down under general comments, number one, the fiberglass lane separators, they're, they're the same ones that you're using here on the property at the Borough Hall. We are proposing those where the trail is adjacent to the driveway. And again, the township has approved that scenario. So the trail and the driveway is separated all along here to this point here. The reason they're connected here is because of this grading here. The existing pipe under the driveway comes through, and it daylights here. So there is somewhat of a steep grade that I can't adjust more than I have already. So I am proposing those fiberglass lane delineators where, along this line here, where the driveway and the trail is adjacent to one another. And I have them at a twenty-five foot spacing.
Kirk, can you inform the planning commission, what is the, what are the dimensions of the trail and the driveway?
Okay. Good, good question. Okay. The driveway itself will be twenty feet wide. Again, it, it is currently proposed to be gravel in, in the borough here, and in the loading and, and maneuvering area for the trucks, we're going to paving in front of the building. But for the, the section of driveway in the borough, except for this, this front section here, the driveway will be gravel. It is proposed to be twenty feet wide with this, and, and you had a comment about this, Chad. This dash line that you see right there, you can see that dash line that runs there, that's an extra four foot wide. It'll be a grass shoulder stabilized, so that the property will have the ability, should they move or leave, that a twenty-four foot wide driveway could, could later be installed before it then drops down. So you know, you have your twenty foot, a regular cross section, an extra four foot cross slope for the driveway, and then, and then it slopes down for, for the, for the flooded area. So that, that's driveway. The, the currently proposed on the plan, the trail is eight foot wide, and it will be a stone surface similar to what exists across the street. And again, this location and construction has been approved, or the planning commission and the township has approved that information, that design.
So up by West Vine, per the plan, there would be some sort of separation between the driveway and the trail?
Up in here, there is.
Was that like five feet maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and this area would be concrete, because it has to be for the ADA ramp.
Exactly, yeah. You can see a little bit better here, there's roughly five feet, and that'll be gravel as well? Or are you going to turn that into grass? Gravel.
That's, that's, currently, that's what my clients suggest.
So it would be a, that whole area, they're proposing it to be just a, a pad of gravel. Okay, and the lines that you see are going to be delineated in the parking space themselves through paint. So it's just going to be all gravel with painted, and, and I don't know if maybe they would consider some bummer blocks to distinguish or not.
Yes, we would do that, we would add the bummer blocks.
And then on the opposite side, the railroad side, it'll still be gravel, but there will be some sort of delineator separating the driveway from the trail itself. And the discussion now is what will those delineators be? They're proposing the flexible, I don't know what you want to call them, they're the same things you have out, out front here. So they have like reflectors on them, you could drive over them if you needed to, whatever, it's not going to damage your vehicle. And as you come down to the Borough Township line, where it says R dash two industrial, that's where the topography gets too steep to have that separation between the driveway and the trail. And at that point, they'll be adjacent, they'll be side by side, so it'll be, you know, still the, the gravel. And then, again, they're proposing delineators, plastic delineator, fiberglass delineators. He's proposing twenty-five foot spacing. The question becomes, is the borough okay with that? Do they want something different? And you'll see later, one of my comments is with regard to the actual entranceway itself up by West Vine Street, you have a similar layout up by Mom's Italian Ace here, where they have a separation between the trail and, and the driveway, there actually is Chestnut Street. And you have a fence there, a white fence. And you'll see in my comment here, I'm, I'm just asking if that's something, because it is a similar type of situation, is that something that's important as well? It's an important discussion, really, how are you going to separate the, and it's going to be trucks, right, coming in and out? Are you going to separate the trucks from the pedestrians on that trail?
How wide's our trail? Is ours eight foot as well?
Eight foot is standard for trails.
Eight foot would be standard for a bicycle slash walk.
Because when we got the feasibility study done with the Liberty Bell Trail, they talked about moving forward in the future, if the borough ever wanted funding, we would have to bring our trail to compliance, which would be paving and making it wider. Like for fu- future funding.
Right.
That's how Montgomery County Trails, yeah.
I would I would be okay with the delineators with the, with the caveat that we put a note on the plan that if we have a problem, that you guys would be willing to put a fence up. We're not asking for a fence, but let's say little Johnny's playing, and little Johnny runs out and gets hit. And we determine that we need a fence there, you guys would be willing to do it, but I think we could go with the delineators because obviously those trucks aren't going to be speeding in and out of there. They're going to be going, you know, five, ten miles an hour. I don't see it as being an issue until there's an issue.
Comfortable with the twenty-five foot spacing?
Yeah.
Thank you for asking.
And then along the same lines, you have the other side of the trail, where it's along the railroad track. And you can see it's, it's literally on that right away line. And in fact, there's a utility pole there where the trail goes from eight feet to roughly four, I don't know the exact dimension, but right at the left of the R, in the R dash two industrial. Yeah, see how it narrows there, because they have to get around a utility pole. And then, like I said, you have the, the railroad tracks, that's what that dark, dark thick line is along the railroad, it's the right of way. Now, there's like bin blocks there, right, currently?
Yeah, as you can see currently, the, there are things happening over the line in the right of way, which will have to stop.
So the next discussion point would be, once you decide what you want between the, the driveway and the trail, do you want anything between the trail and the railroad tracks? Do you want anything between the trail and the railroad tracks?
I mean, just because it's it's on the right of way line, it's not on the railroad line. I mean, how how far is?
Not on the, it's not on the tracks.
It's not on the track, so.
Or is it from the tracks?
It's this is twenty to twenty five feet from the property line to the. To the nearest rail.
Yeah, I I don't. Yeah, I don't see that as being an issue. I I don't think it would be an issue even with the trucks, but I just, like I said, I just reserved that. If there's a. If something happens and we we determine that you really need it. Then. You know, we're covered, but but I I think that those delineators will be fine, because again, you're not talking. Vine Street or something, you know, that where traffic's going. Sixty miles an hour up and down the road. You know, you're going at a very low. Speed that that I wouldn't think that it would be an issue.
Yeah, it's also straight day work, so you know, it's not twenty four hours, right? Something like that.
And and I think, I think you guys said, you know, most of the. Most of it'll be at night and weekends when you're not working. So. And I'm s- uh, can I assume that the material would be the same as what our trail material is?
Yeah.
The crushed limestone?
What is the township, are they requiring the the crushed limestone as well?
They they accepted that, yes.
You guys okay with that? You guys okay with that?
Like it when everybody's nodding up and down. Um, number three is talking about an easement, of course, it will provide an easement. And along with that, there is a PPNL right of way through this uh stretch of the property. And of course, uh, we will be getting their permission. To continue to use that land underneath their um wires. Uh, quite frankly, I'm I'm hoping that they see this as an improvement with the improved driveway. That they'll be able to get better access should they need it uh through the site that currently they they get. Uh, so yes, so we will definitely do that. Uh, there were a couple of other letters, uh, one from the traffic engineer. Uh, who actually represents both the Borough and the Township. Uh, and I have some questions for Anton. Uh, but again, a rather minor in nature. Uh, the uh code enforcement officer, I have a question regarding. One of the sections that decided with respect to bridge and elevated. Um, walk with elevated driveways. Uh, but again, all these things, yeah, that that last paragraph there. That was has to do with, uh, again, a joint cooperation between the township and the Borough. With respect to the the building apartment. But that's 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 the letter right there. Uh, the number two, uh, I will, I will give. All and have a discussion and then we will. So does anybody have any questions to make?
Is there any waivers you're asking for? You didn't note any. In your presentation, is any waivers from the Borough? From Chad's letter or or?
There were no mentioned in Chad's letter.
If my letter, I only. I only reiterate what waivers you request in my letters, so if you requested waivers, then I would have the, you know, noted them in my letter. But I I'm not calling any out unless you ask for them.
I did not ask for any. I was hoping you'd pick up any potential deficiencies. We are getting two waivers from Hatfield Township. One has to do with curving, uh, as we are not curving this driveway and other portions. Of the uh the improvements within the township, so we got a partial, yeah, a recommendation from planning commission. A partial waiver on curving uh as well as the driveway width. Uh, because of the extra four foot of the grass shoulder that we're providing, so we're providing the required twenty four foot width. Even though the driveway in fact will be constructed terms of one. So those were the two waivers that were requested of the township.
Does the Borough have an impact fee for the traffic? Cause it was one noted for the township. In Anton's letter. It noted. In accordance with Liberty, uh, this is on on um. His letter page one. Second comment, in accordance with Liberty about sharp feasibility study. Asked you a guide, um. Proposed shared should be a middle of ten foot wide. And a three and three foot grass, is that? Is that a, is that a waiver, is that a, because if you're proposing eight foot?
Uh, this is not relative to an ordinance section, so it is not a waiver. Relative to his wish. And uh the study. And I would counter that with the fact that I got a recommendation. Already uh with the width. Uh, and the location of the trail uh as designed, so again, that is clearly. A discussion item for Anton myself.
Okay, so that, but but it it's an eight foot trail.
It is an eight foot.
Eight foot limestone trail.
This is a unique situation in that our property technically doesn't have frontage. Are we taking this traffic impact fee up with Anton, especially. Uh, knowing that the Borough does not have an impact, it it's one trip. Um, but at this point, the the developer is running into all kinds of possible ones. And they're trying to save wherever they can. So I I would go back to Anton. Respectfully challenging on that to see if I could get anywhere with him.
No, I was I was more asking the question, I mean, I I didn't know if we had one or not.
The traffic, and that's a significant. Significant effort. Put that together, it takes many bucks, usually you wouldn't see them in in a borough like this because. It's not worth the effort, cause there's not a whole lot of development. That can come into them, you you won't make your money off them.
Yeah, the 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 traffic impact fees comes with the Borough paying for that two oh six study. Which is many hundreds of thousands of dollars, I know that, that's what Hatfield Township paid for years ago.
Yeah, we did one a few years ago and. I think it was up in the seventy eight thousand dollars to do that study. With committees involved several months. And you're not gonna, you're not gonna get that amount of money off the developers in the Borough, so it won't pay for itself.
Larry, do you have any questions? John, Michelle? So. You got a recommendation from Hatfield Township and even though you still have to go to the zoning hearing board for the floodplain stuff.
Correct.
Did you go to the Hatfield Township zoning hearing already?
Yeah, for for the use.
Right, and why, why do you have to go to the township for the floodplain variance, it's not in the township?
There is, there is some some fill in the township.
In the floodplain?
Yeah. Little even less, obviously, that is in the borough, but that existing floodplain line, uh. And that's the proposed floodplain line, the existing floodplain line kinda came over the municipal boundary line. And that is, that is subject to a discussion. And that was not part of our discussion. Uh, with the planning commission.
You you can clearly say it's ninety nine point nine percent the Borough.
Oh, no, 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 I I I get that, um.
I understand your hesitation, Ken, and I won't offend with this too. It's why I want to be very clear, it would only be preliminary. And we would definitely be coming back for water.
Yeah, but you know, you know. And you know as well as I know, in Pennsylvania, preliminary plans better than a final plan approval, cause it sets the conditions. So a- anything, any conditions we set, we have to settle tonight. Because once we get the final plan. We can't set any more conditions, so I'm just, I'm and and I'm not saying no, I'm not hesitant, I'm just. I'm just saying norm, under normal circumstances. We get the zoning relief first before we start handing approvals out, but um. I don't know how you guys feel, I mean, I would be okay with the. Uh, the can, you know, the condition. Of of getting the. Cause if they don't get the variances, they can't build.
Right.
Would you guys be okay with that? I mean, and follow suit, the township's already granted approval and given their blessing and stuff.
And you're saying it's it's a will comply to all the comments in the letter?
Other than some discussions that you and I are gonna have where I might have a little different opinion.
And and if. They ultimately cannot comply with any of the comments that are ordinance related. Then they would have to ask for waivers. Any of the general comments that aren't, don't have an ordinance related to them, that's us working it out. Everything else requires a waiver.
Do do we have the public here tonight, are you?
Well, I just, well, just first of all, see this, so it's kind of. I'm I'm just curious, the trail, was there a trail originally? So what's, so what's happening, is the trail being moved? Going to the railroad?
No, it was only, it was only a right of way for for PPNL, they're actually gonna construct the trail. To continue it into the township, because. The the Borough was the first one to build the trail in Montgomery County from where it starts to where it ends. So they are gonna extend that into the township and the township will hopefully eventually extend it further into the township. So that, so that gives people more. A longer, a long.
The existing driveway that's there now is actually over the original trial bed. So there's the existing driveway that does pretty much run along where the proposed driveway will be. Is where the trial tracks. So the trail never existed uh on this side of our street.
I don't know, new to the area, it's not, you know, the reason why I was asking. Because there was a lot of discussion about trail. And the separation between the driveway and the trail.
What is your name and address for the record?
Victor Lewis. One five one Fortune One.
One five one Fortune.
I wouldn't be asking you for an analysis. It's good or not.
So. If. So if the planning commission was to make a recommendation to be a recommendation for preliminary approval. No waivers have been requested. Um, they have to obtain zoning hearing board approval as outlined in Chad's letter. And. They would put a note on the plan that if there was a. Safety issue. They would remove the, the um. The 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 um, what are those things called, the? The lane separators and put a fence up or similar as required by the Borough. Notwithstanding the fact that. We don't believe that they're needed right now, but. If there is a safety issue in the future. That they would agree to that and. And the. Fence would be required around the basin. Did I hit them all? Does, is there anything else, Chad?
Comfortable that they'll make the stormwater work, there's some cleanup items, but.
Yeah.
It's clean enough that I think it'll work.
Yeah, this is a unique project. In that this particular client uses a lot of water. Within the building, we're proposing a capture and reuse system. It'll be a concrete pit. Uh, that is below the slab, it will collect a hundred percent of the roofboard that comes off the greenhouses. Uh, into that area, it'll be pumped into a um. Filtration system and then further pumped for their irrigation drip system for the plants that will be in here, so. It was, it is quite unique and environmentally friendly from that standpoint.
I'll make a motion uh to recommend. Uh, granting preliminary plan approval sub- subject to the conditions as outlined by the chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Sorry.
I have a second, all those in favor, say aye, all opposed. You guys are good. If not, call me.
It's all reported.
You know, it's it's all reported, that's true.
All right, I have some didn't stay things here. I encourage you to take some.
Great.
Hand them out, love to see everybody there.
Will too.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have. We have old business. Uh, Bennet's Court update?
Uh, Bennet's Court is moving along, they have the utility infrastructure in, they were issued permits, Bob said they're putting, um. They got permits for decks to be put on all the individual units, so they're moving along, um, electric, uh. So where everything looks good, I know, uh, Chad and Gus have been out there for some inspections, so they're. Moving along, looking good, haven't asked for anything back for financial security or escrow or anything, but still moving along.
Uh, update on um forty three Roosevelt.
Forty three Roosevelt is back, um, they are now working with uh Chad. Uh, and Kate to uh come up with financial security in a developers agreement. I had sent over uh the numbers for the electric financial security, just to update them, cause they were all over a year old. So I'm working through that process with Kate, so hopefully they'll put in a demo permit and, you know, move forward.
Speaking of electric, for the Dins project, is the Borough providing the electric?
No, we are not.
Should've made that a condition. Damn. All right, uh.
Their, their main building is outside of our limits, we can't go outside our limits.
Still corrected.
Update on two hundred North Main Street, um, Alliance Housing?
Alliance Housing came back and asked for two new letters of support, um. It seems that their first round of tax credits were unsuccessful, so they submitted uh letters again and are looking for tax credits to move the project forward.
All right, new business, twenty three North Main Street, Arbor Grove Development Zoning Hearing Board, um, the. The they are before the zoning hearing board. Tomorrow?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday. They are moving forward. With the nine lots then, is that correct?
Yes, that's the last plan that we were submitted.
It's nine units, there, it's all gonna be one, all one property.
Yeah.
There are not gonna be individual lots.
And it's my understanding that they. Were trying to do a text amendment of the ordinance, cause this is the piece that. Albeit it doesn't have frontage on the core commercial, it's still within the core commercial. Probably an oversight when the, when the core commercial is being developed, but. Um, the property's in the core commercial. The original development was for commercial. The original development was for commercial building with apartments. And then the second proposal was a ten unit, we had gotten down to nine unit and that ultimately was submitted. They were trying to work a text amendment, so they didn't have to go to the zoning hearing board. Um, I guess there was some back and forth and they decided if. If they, if the text amendment wasn't going to happen without going to the zoning hearing board, if they had to go anyway, they were just going to go for the whole thing, so. Um. I don't know, anybody have any question, comments, concerns?
I don't think it's too many houses for that. Lot there.
And what is, what is your number?
Less than that.
Okay.
That was a general consensus, the people. That came out, you know, even though it was a couple of them. Is overdeveloped for a small property, you know, it's a small area.
You know, it's good on the plan, but when you stand out there and look at the property, you you wonder.
And the traffic that's going to come out of there. That's going to be an issue too.
Well, no matter how it's developed, you're gonna have traffic. The only thing is to be smart about, about the development and. Um. So.
Then there was the height issue too.
No, the height issue was with the commercial building, because it was going to be four stories, I believe.
And it was gonna be now.
Um.
What we're looking.
Like that, right, like the.
It'd be a three story, it'd be a similar, so according to this picture. It'd be a three story. You'll have your front door and then, and then, I guess, two levels. So, yeah, probably something like that.
Thirty-five feet or something was probably what you're looking at.
Which is, I think, the district standard.
What do you think that could probably, I think, the three story town, that would be about thirty-five.
Yeah, so.
One thing that is a little deceiving in in the picture that you see to the bottom right, the front views and. These buildings would actually have two, a two car driveway. So where you see the nice picture there with the grass in front, the front door. That would all be car, it almost looked like a parking lot. This car side by side.
Well, that is, isn't our ordinance three spaces?
You have that two spaces per unit, not including the garage.
Not, that's right, that's right, not including the garage.
And they're proposing some overflow spaces as well.
Right. So i- is. Does the planning commission have a? Recommendation, or are they neutral, do they? Obviously, there was a comment about less units, is there a number of less units? Or does the planning commission just want to stay neutral and let them fight their battle? Has council talked about this at all?
Uh, council has decided to stay neutral.
Does the planning commission want to do the same? Opinion doesn't, but we're a recommending body, so. Um.
I mean, it's just far along, it doesn't matter.
Well, no, 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 you're 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 right, but we, I mean, regardless, we're a recommending body, whether we stay neutral or we. If if there's a member that has an opinion. Or if the consensus of the planning commission is, there's an opinion, number of units or. We want to, we want to add ten more units, you know, whatever, whatever it is for against. We we have, it's our prerogative that we can, we can make that recommendation, we can stay neutral, or we can say. We hate it and we want to deny it, you know, that we we have that right. Obviously Borough Council has taken the position that they they want them to go to the zoning hearing board and they're staying neutral on it, which is a. You know, in some respect, that it's it's a. It's not necessarily a bad thing, it it wasn't an approval, but it certainly wasn't a denial. So, that was council's recommendation, we can certainly do the same thing. And it's up to the developer on Wednesday that he has to fight that battle and and. You know, come up with, uh, you know, his testimony to persuade the zoning hearing.
Yeah, there's a few, few things you could do, if there's a consensus by the planning commission here. You could draft a letter and ask for it to be, uh, an exhibit in the hearing. You can vote to send a member here to be a party to the hearing. You'll go and have to swear in and do, do that process. Or if there isn't a consensus here, you can all certainly go out as residents of the the borough and speak on your behalf.
Sure.
You just want to be able to speak on behalf of the Atlantic Commission if the vote's not there.
Sure.
I understand about building back here, that's a really strange location, that whole piece of property. What I see is that that driveway. It's only a hundred and eighty feet of a corner of your busiest intersection in town. It only takes five seconds to make the turn off of. Watch the, watch the main street before we hit that driveway. You're gonna have nineteen, uh, nine townhouses in there. And and the state average is two cars per household, that's the state average. There's a capacity of eighteen cars in there, not counting service vehicles coming in back and forth out of that. My feeling is, is that I think a real traffic study needs to be gone. For that, for that. Uh, driveway street, or whatever you want to call it, than anything before it should be approved.
Well, they, right now, the developer is only going for a zoning approval. When. It, let's say hypothetically, if he was granted that zoning approval, he would have to provide that traffic study. As part of the subdivision, where the borough would require that traffic study. When they go through the subdivision, the land development process, so he would, he is not absolved from doing that. It's just that it. It's probably, it may or may not be the right time to do it now, I mean, obviously, he's just getting. The use established and any variances for that use, and then he still has. You know, a long way, uphill battle to go through the Sado process and permitting and 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 the the biggest thing is, um. Is this a township appro- this is a township road, right? It's a borough road, or a borough road, yeah. So he would still have to, you know, go through the traffic engineer for all those approvals.
That's what I see.
No, you're not wrong.
Maybe I turn a line, time it, I walk it from the corner.
No, you're.
You know, what I'm talking about, you know, when I say five seconds, that's that twenty-five miles an hour. And you know the people crossing that street or main street crossing far over.
Quite interesting, that everybody's against it.
Everybody gets the same notice.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, everybody gets the same, I mean, and and this room, this room may be packed Wednesday night.
But I mean. I don't live there, and you know, it shouldn't even make the common sense, just like he's pointing out, it's telling you it's going to be a problem. Now, I make my living on problems, so it's probably a good idea for me. You know?
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying.
Every silly decision is a good thing.
So. I guess as I, as I see it, I guess the planning commission's going to remain neutral on this application. And the developer is coming to the zoning hearing board Wednesday night, is that what I hear? All right. All right, we have no action items. Our next meeting is April twenty-second at six P M. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye, those, the ayes have it.